This is a regular meeting of the School Board of Kenosha Unified School District Number One. Notice of this regular meeting was given to the public by forwarding the complete agenda to all requesting radio stations and newspapers. Copies of the complete agenda are available for inspection at all public schools and at the superintendent's office. Anyone desiring information as to forthcoming meetings should contact the superintendent's office. Roll call? Or please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, roll call.
Ms. Adams?
Present.
Mr. Bryan?
Present.
Mrs. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Tierney?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Mott?
Here.
Next, we have awards and recognition.
Good evening. We have a lot of recognition tonight, which is such a wonderful thing. I'd like to begin by inviting our DECA Award winners to the floor, please. Just one moment, please. Thank you. These students competed at the DECA State Career Development Conference in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, at the end of February, qualifying them to compete at the DECA International Conference held in Orlando, Florida, at the end of April. The students competed in various business projects and categories against students from all around the state, and then against students from all around the world. DECA is a co-curricular student organization at the high school and collegiate levels. It prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges worldwide. Over 20,000 students from the U.S., Canada, and other countries attend leadership workshops and compete in project presentations and role-play scenarios at the international conference. We have two schools up here, so, starting with students from Indian Trail High School and Academy who competed include, and I ask that if you are here, because we will recognize everyone, but if you're here, please step forward and then you can step back, just so that everybody knows who's in the room with us. Charlie Deal earned a medal for the Principles of Hospitality and Tourism exam. Sean Hawkins and Colin Youngman earned a medal for role-play in buying and merchandising team decision-making. Surah Maire Candracota earned a medal for role-play in Principles of Marketing. Ezra Thompson earned a medal for role-play in Business Finance. Isaac Moore earned two medals for Accounting Applications Exam and Role-Play. In addition, he was one of the top 10 finalists in the Financial Consulting Project, which earned him a competitive spot at Internationals. Adeline Basigliya earned seventh place in Principles of Marketing, securing a spot at Internationals. Claire Coke was one of the top 10 Hotel and Lodging Management finalists, securing a spot at Internationals. Sarah Berendis earned sixth place on the Hospitality Consulting Project and fourth place in Business Law Team Decision-Making, which earned her a place at Internationals. Eric Ma earned fourth place in Business Law Team Decision-Making and second place on the Hospitality Consulting Project, which earned him a place at Internationals. Nick Slater medaled for role-playing in Sports and Entertainment Marketing and attended the Elevate Leadership Academy. Now, we have our students from Tremper High School. Olivia Ruffalo and Clara Frederick earned medals for role-play in the Marketing Management Team Decision-Making Series. Emma Eltoft and Lucy Salmon earned third place overall in the Integrated Marketing Campaign Event, securing a spot at Internationals. Emma Eltoft also won an individual medal for exam performance. Natalie Nofol won individual medals for role-play in apparel and accessories and placed ninth in her category, securing a spot at Internationals. Adam Goens and Kennedy Zimmerman received gold certification for their school-based enterprise project for Tremper's school store, Home Court, securing a spot at Internationals. In addition, the Tremper DECA Chapter earned Thrive recognition for its membership and chapter campaigns, which secured four spots for them in the Thrive Leadership Academy at the international level. Megan Straka and Bella Jackson attended this academy. Although none of our students placed at the international level this year, simply earning a spot to compete among more than 200 talented students in each category is an outstanding accomplishment. We are incredibly proud of each of you. Your hard work, creativity, and dedication have not gone unnoticed. Your commitment to your projects is reflected in your recognition tonight. Whether working individually or as a team, you've demonstrated excellence every step of the way. Congratulations on everything you've achieved. You've earned it. Next, I want to invite our district-wide Student Art Show winners and their judges to the floor. Unfortunately, I think we have just judges tonight, but we still want to show off the artwork of our amazing students, so our judges will do Savannah White action for us here. The KUSD Fine Arts Department hosts the district-wide Student Art Show in collaboration with the Kenosha Art Museum each year. During that time, pieces are selected by various organizations to be kept on display for a year, which we are pleased to share with you this evening. Those who selected the pieces are here to display the selected artwork. The City of Kenosha, do you mind stepping forward? Thank you. The City of Kenosha chose Lisa Smith of Bradford High School's piece titled "Hope." The Kenosha Area Business Alliance, thank you, Mr. Blank, chose Leslie Rodriguez of Bradford High School's piece titled "Belair." The Department of Fine Arts chose Sofia Cuchere of Indian Trails piece titled "Sunsets." The superintendent chose Grishenad Alvarez Velez of Bradford High School's piece titled "Reflect." And the Board of Education chose Daniela Martinez of Bradford High School's piece titled "Parents." We thank our students for sharing their gift and talents with our community during the art show and now for the year ahead at each of these locations. They are truly talented individuals, and we are thankful they are willing to share those talents with those around them. Next, I'd like to invite Lakeview Skills USA students to the floor. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. As a nonprofit national education association, Skills USA serves middle school, high school, and college and post-secondary students preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. Skills USA is recognized by the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Labor as a successful model of employer-driven youth development training. This spring, Lakeview students participated in the Skills USA State Competition, and some will advance to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia, in late June. The state conference serves as a showcase for career and technical education students, with more than 2,000 individuals, including students, teachers, and industry professionals participating each year. Again, if you are here, try to step forward or step out of the line somehow, if you can. Shelley Nash. Shelley was elected state president and will advance to Nationals as a delegate for Wisconsin. Anya Panchal. Anya was elected district vice president and will advance to Nationals as a delegate for Wisconsin. Sarah Yusuf. Tonbi Agral. Jane Gristung. Isaac Lee. Sumaya Hassan. Audrey Tanuda and Jessica Camacho placed first in the opening and closing ceremonies and will advance to Nationals. Next, we have Hayden Peters, Charles Tuskowski, and Kayden Miller, who took first in Engineering and Technology Design and will also advance to Nationals. Lilia Troyer took first place in T-shirt design and will advance to Nationals. Brennan Meyer took first place in Faciliton and will advance to Nationals. Samantha Thomas took first place in Prepared Speech and will advance to Nationals. Esteban Ling took second place in CNC Three Access Milling. Benson Border, Hannah Litwoller, and Brody Peterson took second place in Community Service. Sophia Tanuda and Quentin Madison took second place in Urban Search and Rescue. Cassandra Rivers took third place in Prepared Speech. Rebecca Waite took third place in Medical Math. Sophia Green took third place in Extempor- I'm not even gonna get the word.
Temporaneous.
Extemporaneous. Speech. Not my thing. Tyrone Chen took third place in Computer Programming. Congratulations to each of you for your outstanding accomplishments. You have clearly worked hard to earn your medals, and it shows. Keep up the great work, and we will be cheering for you at the end of June as you take the stage in Atlanta. Again, congratulations. Last, but not least, I'd like to invite the Bradford and Tremper FBLA students to the floor. Future Business Leaders of America, better known as FBLA, is an international career and technical student organization that promotes service, progress, and education. As the largest student organization in the world, FBLA includes members of the middle, high, college, and professional levels. Through FBLA, students gain valuable experiences in leadership, community service, financial literacy, and competitive events. This year, Bradford and Tremper High Schools proudly participated in the FBLA Regional Leadership Conference on February 1st, the State Leadership Conference on May 1st, and is preparing for the June National Leadership Conference. We'd like to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of our outstanding students. First up will be our Bradford students. If you are here and with us in the room, please step forward so everybody can recognize you. Darby Battle earned second place in Advertising at Regionals and placed fifth at the state level. Stephanie Laguna earned third place in Business Law at Regionals and 12th place at the state level. Elia Barlow and Gabriela Cassio teamed up to earn second place in Graphic Design at Regionals and placed sixth at the state level. Adetid took first place in Social Media Strategies at Regionals and placed eighth at the state level. Daniel Soceda, Pedro Vasquez, and Alex Johnson earned first place in the JA Titan Business Challenge at Regionals and placed 10th at the state level. Jaden Sanchez earned second place in Client Services at Regionals and placed fourth at state. She will be advancing to the national competition in June. Riley Javikas earned second place in Banking and Financial Systems at Regionals and fourth at state, securing her spot at Nationals in June. Logan Rose, Mackenzie Smith, and Mackenzie Maurer earned third place in Mobile Application Development at the state conference and will also be heading to Nationals. Next up are our Tremper students. Donza Price and Isaac Acuna took second place in Business Plan at Regionals and placed 11th at state. Isabelle Essigier took second place in Job Interview at Regionals and placed 14th at state. Natalie Nolfo took first place in Marketing at Regionals and placed 15th at state. Michael Sandwich took third place in Public Service. Mia Franks took second place in Public Speaking at Regionals and placed 11th at state. And Lucy Richmond took third place in Introduction to Public Speaking at Regionals and placed second at state. She will also be advancing to Nationals in June. A special thank you to our dedicated FBLA advisors, Brenda Gallo and Miguel Escobedo at Bradford and Michael Steinburn at Tremper for their support and leadership throughout the year. Congratulations to our students. Your hard work, talent, and determination have truly paid off. We are proud of how you represented Bradford and Tremper, and we can't wait to see you on the national stage. Best of luck to all of you.
And next, we have the introduction of the student ambassador. Mr. Tierney?
Yes, tonight, we have Demarcus Gaston from Indian Trail High School, and I will let him introduce himself.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Demarcus Gaston. I'm a senior at Indian Trail High School and Academy. Just some things about myself. I'm ending off my high school career as cum laude, but my freshman year at an old school I went to, I was ranked first in my class. But more relevant information would be, I'm in newspaper currently, and I worked on stories like our referendum, and I've just done things to do my best to inform the student body as my page layout editor and writer. I collaborate with staff, faculty, students, just really anyone who has a story to get out there, or anyone who has information that needs to be shared. Yeah, a special thanks to Mr. Keno for giving me this opportunity to be here. Special thanks to all of you for being here today as well. Thank you to Mr. Straight, my newspaper teacher, and then just all my classmates who've helped me go there. But that's all. Thank y'all for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gaston. If you have any questions or concerns or anything, just let us raise a hand, we'll call on you. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. The end of the school year is a time for celebration. As we saw before us tonight, we really do have a lot of amazing students. And this evening, we had several groups and individuals before us whose accomplishments to recognize and celebrate. From sporting events to clubs to the arts, our students accelerate in many areas. We're also very grateful for our dedicated staff members who devote their time and energy to mentor and coach our students to be successful in the local and state competitions they're in. Beginning Thursday, June 5th through Monday, June 9th, we'll also be celebrating our high school seniors as they graduate from Kenosha Unified. High school graduation is one of the most satisfying and enjoyable events that I have the privilege to attend as superintendent. Nothing beats seeing the pride and joy of our graduating seniors and their families as they cross the stage. The month of May is a very busy time with all the celebrations and events. School years don't wind down, they speed up at the end. So I invite you to join me in taking in one or all of the events that celebrate the amazing work of our talented students and staff, and I also wish everyone a safe and restful summer break. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the legislative report. Dr. Price?
Very, very brief, but I just want to thank the superintendent, Dr. Weiss, and our CFO, Terry Camden, for going to Madison to testify on behalf of our annuitants and in opposition to more constraints on referendum. And tonight, we also have, Mr. Bryan has a legislative update.
Thank you. Just a quick update on a couple of items. The first one, most importantly, being the status of the biennial budget. Deliberations should be underway, and I think one of the big sticking points in this was what to do with the state's budget surplus and whether or not the tax cut proposal that the legislature is proposing, whether that would be paid, included in the budget or a separate bill. This also comes as a result of the Joint Finance Committee taking the stance that they would be taking motion or action on the budget from base, meaning that they would be going off of amendments to the budget based on the prior year's funding levels. The legislature, well, the two ranking Republicans in the House, the Assembly and the Senate have met with the governor twice last week to get the talks rolling on a budget and what that might look like. So more information should be coming shortly. And my understanding, I just saw the notice come through that sometime later this week, it sounds like joint finance is starting to take action on budget motions for some other agencies, like the smaller ones, so at some point eventually, they'll be turning their attention to education pretty soon. So there's that on the budget, and then, of course, talking about their rehired annuitants, the Assembly Committee on Local Government is going to be holding their public hearing on the assembly version of that bill. I believe tomorrow is when it's going to be, and of course, as we stated, it would allow WRS retirees to return to work without suspending their annuity up to 60 months. their annuity up to 60 months, ideally as a way of addressing, you know, teacher shortages in the state. My understanding is that DPI is testifying in favor when that bill comes before the committee. And then the last thing with the indirect impact on education, the, a group of senators have released a package of bills called the Red Tape Reset, which changes the way that state agencies promulgate administrative rules. And for DPI, that's things like teacher licensure, graduation standards, a number of other things related to school district standards. What they intend to do with this package of legislation would require DPI and other agencies to have to re-up their administrative roles every seven years with already limited state resources. So that's going to be more work for rulemaking, which could result in legal ambiguity for school districts. So this is probably one that we want to follow, especially if there's any point due to political reasons or policy reasons that, you know, the legislature should object to any DPI rules or even like, you know, rules promulgated by DCF agencies that we have an indirect connection with. But that's my update for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. And next, we have our public comments. Welcome to all who've speak, turned up to speak tonight. The board values your input and interest in KUSD. We'd like to remind you that school board meetings are not public meetings, but meetings held in public. Any written comments received prior to the meeting have been shared with the full board. Names read into the record upon request. Each speaker has three minutes, and we have very few speakers. So we'll start with Mr. Farnsworth.
Scott Farnsworth. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, when discussing the impact of a failed referendum at the community town halls, Dr. Weiss correctly stated that, quote, "Research has shown that the best way to improve student learning is to have a high-quality teacher in front of them, period. If we are put at a disadvantage against our neighbors, I'm fearful we will lose good teachers and good staff." In spite of this accurate observation, the proposals to balance next year's budget includes the possibility of both a salary and a schedule advancement freeze. While no one has raised the question of utilizing the unassigned fund balance that has been and is currently far in excess of this board's maximum, according to policy. I understand that you take comfort in having a healthy balance sheet, but the referendum failed, and, simply put, you can't afford a healthy balance sheet any longer. It is also the height of hypocrisy to complain about the state legislature refusing to allocate its excess funds when you are doing exactly the same thing. And let's talk about the origins of that healthy balance, shall we? This district has repeatedly placed its financial burdens on the back of its staff. As I have stated many times, the vast majority of those funds have come directly from the pockets of the employees of this district, through staff cuts beyond what was needed, to years of both salary freezes and substandard raises, to the decimation of health insurance benefits and the elimination of supportive health accounts, to earlier freezes on salary schedule advancements, all of which put this district at a competitive disadvantage to its neighbors even before this year in every area. And you have a proposal that will put you another 3% behind. And then there's the proposed freeze on the salary advancements schedule. I can only think to quote John McCarro, "You cannot be serious." Some of you were on this board the last time you did this. Have you forgotten the ill will and inequities it created? Staff who earned a master's degree in other districts who had theirs recognized when hired here, or even staff who earned their masters here, left for a year and then had them honored for salary placement upon their return, while staff who earned their masters and stayed here continued to see theirs go uncompensated? Or staff hired in the same year, one staying in the district, the other going to another district for a year or two and returning to have their years of experience counted for placement at a higher step on the schedule, while those who stayed loyal remain stuck? Have you forgotten? It is a recipe for staff instability and a continuous disruption of both staff development and student learning, and it should never be repeated, period. Making financial decisions... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Next, we have Gail Taylor Clark, Gail Clark Taylor, but she wanted to be virtual and we weren't able to, we didn't have proper notice. So, Gail, if you're listening, sorry. Third is Brittany Platchek. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight as a concerned parent of two students at PPE, Present Perry Elementary, a kindergartner and a second grader, to bring to your attention the level of disrespectful behavior and crass language that they and many of their peers have been exposed to throughout this school year. Due to time constraints, I'll be brief, but here's just a few samples of what my children have experienced. One has been physically assaulted, punched both in the face and the stomach, no blood, but we're okay. My son and his classmates have had to leave the classroom for their own safety due to another student's uncontrollable behavior. He has heard peers use aggressive and profane language, including phrases like, and I won't use the actual words, "I hate all you MFers," and "Shut the F up." He has heard students cursing directly at their teacher during instructional time. What's even more concerning is that I learned all about this, all of this from my sons, not the school. No staff member reached out to notify me of these serious issues. When I contacted the principal, I took away a couple of big points. This is not an isolation, excuse me, this is not isolated to PPE. These behaviors are occurring all over, all over the district. Redistricting created a difficult transitional years, and all schools were unprepared for the increased behavioral challenges. The principal's time is now dominated by behavioral incidents, limiting her ability to support her staff and fulfill her administrative duties. This is not sustainable. Our teachers are burnt out, our principals are overwhelmed, and most importantly, our children are paying the price. My boys and many of their peers no longer enjoy going to school. They're distracted, anxious, and no longer feel safe in their learning environment. This flies in the face of our district's stated mission to provide equal opportunity for all students to learn in a resource-rich, safe, and welcoming environment. Right now, that promise is not being kept. I urge the board to take immediate action, invest in behavioral support staff, provide schools with resources for proactive intervention, ensure clear communication with parents when serious incidents occur, and most importantly, protect the learning environment of all students. If we fail to act, we risk not only falling short of our educational goals, we risk losing the trust of families who want nothing more than for their children to learn, grow, and thrive. Thank you for your time. I will be following up with an email with further details and looking forward to collaborating because I am a member of this community and I want to be an active part of this as well.
Thank you. Thank you to all who spoke. Please know that in alignment with state statute, board members will not reply to public comments unless they're related to an item properly noticed on tonight's agenda, and will do so at the time the item is addressed in the agenda. Next, we have the remarks by the president. I just want to reiterate Dr. Weiss's comments about the fact that the end of the year is coming fast and furious. And I am so heartened to see my fellow board members at a number of different events and schools, and the teachers are just continuing to do great lessons and expecting great learning right up until the end. I believe a number of us are going to be over at Kemper Center watching a racket launch. So, and I saw members of the board and various teachers, a lot of retired teachers, at the planetarium when the Bradford Planetarium was dedicated to Millie Carlson, thanks to the efforts of the science teacher, Jason Standish. So keep up the good work. Congratulations to all the graduates. I will see you on stage or the night of the event. Thank you. Next, we have the administrative and supervisory appoint, oh, one more thing, just sorry, just got to do a shout out to the retirees, and I'm noticing a number of people who continued on after I left. And I'm recognizing fewer and fewer names, but one of the teachers that I started out with, Sue Bryan, who knows one of the board members here, and Sue and I went to school together, started teaching in special ed together, and now she will be joining me in retirement. And jump on in, Sue, the water's fine. Next, the administrative.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have several administrative appointments. Our first one is, and I believe when I call their name, do they, Tanya, do they come forward? Is that correct? Our first appointment is Teresa Curly. Teresa has worked in education since 1994. She holds a bachelor's degree in sociology from the University of Wisconsin Parkside and a master's degree in administrative leadership and education from the University of Illinois at Chicago. Her current certifications include teacher, principal, and administrator. Mrs. Curly began her career in 1994, serving in various roles, including middle school teacher, elementary teacher, and reading specialist. In 2005, while still teaching, she developed and led a multi-district early childhood centers charter school, and was named principal in 2006. In 2017, she became the principal of Whittier Elementary School, where her leadership contributed to consistent gains in student growth and achievement. Under her direction, Whittier earned and exceeds expectations rating on the Wisconsin Schools State Report Card. The state of Wisconsin also recognizes the school for implementing positive behavioral intervention and supports in its multi-level systems of support in reading and math. She is also an active member of the Whittier Parent Teacher Organization, collaborating with parents and staff to enhance the school community. In addition to her school leadership, Mrs. Curly has demonstrated a strong commitment to district-wide improvement through her active involvement in several key committees, including Response to Intervention, District Guiding Coalition, and Act 20 Assessment Team. Her work on these committees highlights her dedication to evaluating and enhancing educational practices to high levels of achievement for all students. Mrs. Curly's commitment to equity, academic success, and family engagement, paired with her collaborative leadership style and data-driven approach, makes her an excellent fit for the Title I coordinator role. Our next administrative appointment is Ms. Kim Fisher for Ruthers Central High School Principal. Kim Fisher has been working in education since 1998. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts in English from the University of Wisconsin Parkside and a Master's of Science in Educational Leadership from Cardinal Stretch. Her current certifications include teacher, principal, director of instruction, and administrator. Ms. Fisher began her career as a teacher at McKinley Middle School in 1998. In 2002, she transitioned to Mahone Middle School before becoming the assistant principal at Bullen Middle School. In 2007, she was named principal of Bullen, where she served until 2013, when she assumed the role of assistant principal at Bradford High School. As a building leader, she has coordinated and led professional development, revitalized the freshman academy, implemented the Quest in Teen Leadership Programs, and planned and facilitated annual data retreats, among many other initiatives. In 2016, Ms. Fisher took the role of interim regional coordinator of leadership and learning for secondary schools for one year before returning to Bradford High School as assistant principal. She was officially appointed to the position in 2020 and has served in this capacity since. In this role, she has assisted and supported schools in addressing parent concerns, developed and implemented school improvement plans, managed crisis response efforts, overseen ALIS procedures and training, and much more. Ms. Fisher's extensive knowledge and deep commitment to supporting students from a diverse background make her an excellent fit for the role of Ruthers principal. Our next administrative appointment is Yolanda Jackson Lewis to Curtis Strange Elementary Principal. Yolanda Jackson Lewis has worked in education since 1995. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts in English from the University of Wisconsin Parkside and a Master's of Science in Educational Leadership from Cardinal Stretch University. Her current certifications include teacher, principal, director of instruction, and administrator. Ms. Jackson Lewis began her career as an educational assistant at Wilson Elementary School in 1995. Inspired by her experience there, she returned to school to earn her teaching degree and became a teacher at Wilson in 1997. In 2002, she was appointed principal of Wilson Elementary, where she led the school through a successful transformation into expeditionary learning education model. This approach emphasized student-centered, project-based learning that prioritized character development, collaboration, and high-quality academic work. Wilson also adopted an extended-year calendar during her tenure, providing additional instructional time to support student growth. In 2019, she was named the coordinator of diversity, student, and family engagement, where she worked to build inclusive partnerships, strengthen community connections, and develop equitable systems district-wide. Ms. Jackson Lewis's leadership and knowledge of the district make her a great fit as the principal of Curtis Strange Elementary School. Our final administrative appointment is Mr. John Sutter to the role of Director of Facilities. John Sutter has worked in architecture since 1989. He holds a Bachelor of Architecture and a Master's Degree in Architecture and Urban Planning from the University of Wisconsin Milwaukee. He is a registered architect in the state of Wisconsin and an active American Institute of Architects member. While completing his graduate studies, Mr. Sutter worked for the UW Milwaukee Department of Planning and Construction from 1989 to 1982. In 1993, he joined Partners in Design Architects as a staff architect, contributing to a wide range of educational design projects, including more than 50 projects for KUSD. Among his notable contributions were the renovations of Frank and Southport Elementary Schools. In 2005, Mr. Sutter joined the KUSD Facilities Department as project architect, bringing decades of architectural expertise to the district's building projects and infrastructure planning. In this role, he has managed renovations and construction of several new schools, including Nash and Brass, the Indian Trail High School addition and renovation, and the new Lakeview Technology Academy. He also oversaw the expansion of athletic facilities at Bradford and Trumper High Schools and the complete masonry restoration of the Ruthers Building. In addition to his project leadership, Mr. Sutter manages the major maintenance budget and oversees the implementation of annual major maintenance projects. He works closely with HVAC, plumbing, electrical, painting, and environmental crew leaders to resolve issues and ensure the ongoing functionality of all district facilities. Mr. Sutter's extensive knowledge and experience make him an excellent fit for the Director of Facilities role.
Next, we have the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Yes. I will just ask, we did have a revised organizational meeting, so if it would be in order to approve with the revised organizational meeting minutes, would you?
I will accept that friendly amendment.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Yes, just for the viewing public. The first A, B, and C, of course, are recurring consent agenda items, but we are also approving for second reading Policy 5330, Assignment of Students to Schools. We're also approving Policy 6456, the graduation requirements. And we're also approving second reading Policy 6457, student awards and scholarships. So these are included in our consent agenda this evening.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair, any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Next, we have the, we have no old business. Okay. New business discussion, action, we have a resolution. Mrs. Adams?
Yes. This is a resolution of appreciation to Christine Schmalling, whereas Christine Schmalling was elected to the Board of Education of the Kenosha Unified School District in April 2022, and served faithfully and with honor for three years. And whereas she held the positions of treasurer and board member during her tenure on the board. And whereas during her terms on the board, she chaired the Planning Facilities Committee and served on the Personnel Committee, as well as the Head Start Committee. And whereas during her terms, the board approved the hiring of a new superintendent in 2022, approved spending plans of the ESTER I, II, and III Federal Stimulus Dollars 2022, approved the relocation of Lakeview Technology Academy to the Kenosha Innovation Neighborhood at the former Chrysler Site in 2022, approved the district's growth of a graduate in 2023, approved the rightsizing recommendations in 2023, approved the Donovan Group for Referendum Planning in 2024, approved the 2025 Operational Referendum, and approved the exchange of real property agreement with the city of Kenosha for the vacated former school sites and relocation of Hillcrest to the former Wilson Site in 2025. And whereas she has been an advocate for the staff, students, families, and taxpayers of the Kenosha community as she worked to ensure all students have an equal opportunity to prepare for college and their careers with the support of highly qualified educators in a learning environment that is resource-rich, safe, and welcoming. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Kenosha Unified School District formally acknowledges and extends profound appreciation to Christine Schmalling for her years of service and continued support of educating the children of our community. I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution of appreciation to Christine Schmalling.
I'll second that motion. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Price?
I just want to say, I really appreciate Christine's attention to homework and doing a lot of work and looking at the charter school issues. That was one place we connected, and I appreciate your diligence to that.
Mrs. Stevens?
I'd just like to say thank you, Christine, for all your hard work. There was a lot going on in that short period of time, and you did a great job with it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bryan?
As never, somebody who's never had the chance to serve with you, but has replaced you, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. I was obviously on the Personnel Committee with you as a citizen representative while you were a board rep, and I've always appreciated your insight, I appreciate your conversations. And, you know, thank you for your service and, you know, serving KUSD and all the students of the district. Looking forward to seeing you at the dog park.
Okay. Mr. Tierney?
Just want to say thank you for stepping up. I know it was out of your comfort zone when you did it, but you stood up for a lot of people that weren't being heard at the time. I appreciate it. You got me knocking on doors, now I'm here. Thanks. Good job.
Okay, I'm going to hand the proverbial gavel over to Carl and just echo the thanks of the board. Because Christine was able to do some things that probably wouldn't have gotten done otherwise. I can be very honest about saying that. And there were things that needed to be done, and we appreciated your efforts, your honesty, and your unfailing hard work. Thank you, Christine. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, and I would have to say again, I've said it before, I'll say it again. Christine has been one of the most fiscally responsible board members I have met, and I enjoyed the three years of her being on the board. I did not know her prior to her board service, I know her well now. She was, she was very good on the Head Start, Parent Committee, the Policy Council. We both shared that passion for Head Start, and then we both share a passion for fiscal responsibility. So thank you, Christine, we're going to miss you.
Any, yes?
I just wanted to say thank you. I will repeat what Mary said, there are things that would not have gotten done without you, and I appreciate the consistency and the persistence that you showed, and you got things done that needed to get done. I appreciate it.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Christine. Next, we have the National Foster Care Awareness Month Resolution.
Hi, the National Foster Care Month 2025 Resolution. Whereas former President Ronald Reagan pronounced May as National Foster Care Month more than 30 years ago to bring foster care issues to the forefront, highlight the importance of permanency for every child, and recognize the essential role that foster parents, social workers, and advocates play in the lives of children in foster care throughout the United States. And whereas Kenosha Unified students, including those in foster care, are the future and they deserve equitable access to every support necessary to thrive and succeed in life. And whereas the foster care system exists to ensure the safety and well-being of children during times when they cannot remain safely with their birth families, with the ultimate goal of achieving a safe, loving, and permanent home for each child. And whereas foster parents are frontline caregivers for children in crisis, providing essential physical care, emotional support, and educational advocacy, and many go on to adopt children when reunification is not feasible. And whereas the need is especially great for families who can care for school-aged children, teenagers, sibling groups, children of color, and children with special needs. And now therefore be it resolved that Kenosha Unified hereby recognizes May as National Foster Care Month, and expresses its gratitude to all those who support the foster care system, including caseworkers, volunteers, educators, mental health providers, and advocates, and commits to working collaboratively to ensure that every child has the opportunity to grow up in a safe, loving, and permanent family. Like to make a motion to move to approve the resolution.
Motion made to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Stevens. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you for bringing this forward, and thank you for reading this. I know we see eye to eye on this and how important it is in our district with more and more children that need the extra support. I'm also a former foster and adoptive parent, and I know how impactful that can be in the lives of the families and the children that we serve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes.
The proverbial gavel has been transitioned back over to me. The next item on the agenda is the 2025-2026 Budget Update. Dr. Weiss?
Yep, thank you very much. Presenting this will be Mr. Hampton.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is an update to the 25-26 budget. I emphasize that word "update" because this budget is going to be done incrementally. So as we learn new information, we will keep giving the board updates, and as we have more recommendations, those will also come back to the board. This is not final. The items in here are all still being worked on. But what we know as of today, here are some items that we will be making some recommendations on. Going back to kind of recap, post-failed referenda, we categorized our items into budget categories. Long-term hold items include controlled entrances, security hardware upgrades, these upgraded security systems in general, high school prep time, elementary prep time. Those are in the long-term hold categories. What that basically means is those are significant dollars that would require a major funding source before we could really address them. In the short-term hold section, we've identified the technology refresh restoration, major maintenance restoration, curriculum materials budget, adoption restoration, and staff compensation. Those items are not finalized, and they're short-term hold or delayed as we keep working on the budget, but those are priority items. And then we have the recommended reductions. Those include staffing adjustments through the staffing process, and then some programmatical reductions and cuts. So building on the presentations that we have already discussed with the board, here's some updates. Taking a step back, our budget is built in revenues, which is money coming in, and then expenditures, money going out. The revenue projections haven't changed much, although we do have an adjustment to the enrollment, declining enrollment reduction there. You see 550 now is the projected full-time equivalent student enrollment reduction that we will have next year. That number was originally in the 350 range, but now projections are looking worse on that. There are some temporary pieces in the revenue limit that we'll be able to take advantage of, declining enrollment exemption being one. So we won't immediately feel the full impact of that. We'll be able to absorb it and have some time to plan for it. But make no mistake, the base enrollment that we have is severely declining. The 325 per pupil increase that you see there was tied to the governor's line item veto that extended that increase for 400-plus years. That veto has been upheld in the legislature, so we have been planning for that, and now it will stay, it's holding. So with that, our revenue limit authority increases by approximately $3.8 million there. Another item outside of the revenue limit formula, but tied to our enrollment, is something called per pupil categorical aid. Right now, the assumption is that that will hold at $742 per pupil, but we do have the continuing declining enrollment, so we will see a loss of revenue on that line. All in all, we're looking at about $3.5 million of additional revenue for next year. This has taken a step back to the original budget projections that we had for the board, and how we got to the referendum amount, and breaking that back down to categorize. Initially, remember, we had around a $19 million budget shortfall, is what I'll call that. And then we tacked on some additional funds in hopes of being able to borrow funds to take care of some secured entrances that would have been about a $15 million total cost project, which would have been funded by $3 million per year to borrow those funds over five years. And that's what you see in line 15. Right down here. The security hardware additional pieces were also add-ons. But now moving on, those long-term items, the high school prep included a cost of nearly $4.5 million, which would basically mean adding FTE, adding teacher-staff. So those items were on hold. The short-term items you see here, as we mentioned before, in that original column, you can see in the failed scenario, they have been reduced or eliminated at this point in time. So the previous meeting, we went through this with $3.5 million of revenue, and now with these updated expenditures totaling nearly $8 million, implies a budget shortfall of about $4.5 million. Administration was tasked with coming back to the board with the details of how to close this gap, and that's what we have here now. So the recommended reductions include increasing class sizes while still staying within current policies. So there was no policy adjustment, but class sizes were filled up to the policy where possible. Incorporating some non-classroom teaching positions back into the classroom. Reduction of the Recognition Committee budget, and eliminating AST, or Administrative Supervisor and Technical Positions, through review of positions as vacancies occurred or attrition. This is the detail to close that gap and plus a little bit. So we'll go through these lines, but these have been coded to show you that lines 1 through 18 are staff-related. So these have occurred through the natural staffing process, through school leadership, human resources, finance, administration. These items, which we'll go through, we've listed, line one, you see that there's a zero FTE change, but we've listed that here to show you that at the elementary level, with declining enrollment, we could have had some reductions here, but we held to the premise of not having K3 kindergarten through three splits. We held off on any splits at those early levels, given the Act 20 challenges that we know are coming. The conversion of our charter school, former charter school, which was K-Tech, now Lakeview K8, did result in staffing efficiencies. Part of this is a little bit of a delay due to the merger of that program. It used to be in two buildings, and it was merged down to one. We're now able to catch up and realize some of those efficiencies. At the middle school level, this includes staffing up to policy as well as some of those non-classroom positions being reabsorbed into the classroom, specifically the instructional technology position, and reduction at the library-media positions. At the high school level, same thing. And then we have 4K. At the 4K, this is the district 4K-funded positions. We had two positions that were authorized but not filled all year. So the recommendation, based on the enrollment projections that we have, is that those will not be needed, so we are recommending to reduce those budget authorizations. A little cleanup at the E-school, adding just .25 FTE. Special ed services, we have identified some additional needs at the special ed department. So those are going to be IEP-based and student need. So we are actually adding a special ed FTE here, and then converting. here and then converting a AST position into a teacher consultant position. So you'll see this plus one, but you'll see a minus in the AST ranks. And then a reduction of point five FTE of a currently vacant position that's an at-risk position at Hillcrest, but they will be managing with uh point five instead of a one point oh in that open position. ASTs are identified here. So technology support positions. These are positions managed by the IS department, but supporting schools. Two of those FTE will be reduced. Former Lakeview K-eight assistant principal position also being reduced. The facility's architect position is being reduced. School leadership coordinator position being reduced and instructional technology position. This was the one that is really tied to that additional teacher. So these really is just a classification conversion, but there's a plus and a minus. We also have the addition of six special ed ESPs. The reduction of two clerical ESPs at the high school level, one at Trumper and one at Bradford. The reduction of five ESPs at the middle school level. Those include four online support positions, so one at each middle school and then some additional cleanup at Bullen. When looking at comparisons, that was an extra allocation compared to their peers. And then this final one is tied to a student enrollment. So this is a reduction of an interpreter for hearing impaired student, student that is no longer with us, that's moved on from the district, so those services are not required. That's got a little caveat. If we do get additional enrollment for students to have those needs, we would be meeting those needs and adding staff if needed. Finally, these numbers nineteen through twenty-three are the ones that the board is considering for tonight. So these are non-staffing related. We're looking at fifty thousand dollar reduction in map testing cost, replacing map testing with another testing program. I believe that's Ames Web. Uh forty-five thousand dollar reduction to the recognition commission committee budget, which was formerly fifty thousand, so that would leave five thousand remaining and there would be some changes coming, being recommended in those uh what awards and what types of recognition we offer. This is for more of informational item. There is a recommendation to reduce the athletics equipment budget by thirty percent for next year, which would save about twelve thousand dollars. However, there's an increase in the WIAA officials pay coming that we will have to meet and that's going to basically eat up those savings, but we wanted to show this for transparency so that people do understand for equipment, there will be a reduction. But we'll be absorbing those savings right back into the department budget to pay for WIA official pay. And then finally, eliminating kind of an anomaly of thirty thousand dollars that the board had approved to have a district funding for the Thesbian Festival, which is typically something that type of event would be something that would be fundraised. So other student organizations typically fundraise for this, so the recommendation coming from Fine Arts would be to get some equity there and also eliminate that funding here centrally. If you total up all these reductions and adds, you net them out, we're looking at about four point eight million dollars of reductions. In that, there's forty-two point eight four FTE or full-time equivalents for staff and those are summarized for you here in the corner as well.
Questions for Tarek?
Yes, Dr. Price. Couple more things just to hit on here and then we can, if we can, unless we want to go back to the the slide for questions. However, you guys want to do it. This is just information's quick. Some supporting documentation for the uh Thesbian Festival recommendation. The district, so from the Fine Arts Department, has a budget of about a hundred twenty thousand dollars that consists of the thirty thousand dollars for each comprehensive high school for their theater programs, plus the thirty thousand separate line item for the Thesbian Festival. There are about two hundred active participants in the theater program, so if you do the quick math on that, that's about a six hundred dollar per student cost. Comparatively, the Fine Arts program has a kindergarten through twelve music and art budget of about a hundred thousand dollars that serves about thirty-seven hundred participants. So that's about twenty-seven dollars per student. So this won't completely fix that, but it would. It would go, this would be about four hundred fifty per student without the thirty thousand dollars. So it's still significantly different, but it is highlighting some of the inequities that we have going on. Other items under future review that aren't necessarily going to show up on a budget reduction line, but user fees are being recommended to increase at the middle and high school level for renting instruments. We currently are at fifty dollars. The recommendation is to make that one hundred dollars. Restructuring the academies at Indian Trail, that's on its way, but there will be minimal impact to currently enrolled students, so it's going to be a little bit of a longer term thing. And then also with Fine Arts offerings, this isn't going to be a reduction because that budget will turn around and use those funds to fund some of the things that are being shorted right now, like instrument repair and replacement. But there is a recommendation to limit the district-funded solo and ensemble performances, limiting them to three. If a family would choose to do more than that, we would be asking them to pay for the, anything more than three. And now questions.
Dr. Price?
Uh, thank you uh for that thorough explanation. Um, this is a very modest one, but I was just curious, um, what are we replacing the map uh testing with? And maybe that's Wendy.
Yeah, that's Wendy. I'll ask her to speak on that or Chris.
So Ames Web Plus is the platform that the district chose for the Act twenty assessments and we will be shifting K-five assessments to Ames Web Plus for reading and math.
And and that one's much more aligned to what teachers are teaching, basically.
Yes.
Thanks. And I just had a another quick one. This one was a little bit broader. Um, can you just, for the benefit of the public, explain what ASTs? I mean, who who is covered under that administrative and and are we mainly looking at cutting clerical?
There's administrative stands for, the AST group is administrative supervisory and technical. So that is a range from everybody, from superintendent, leadership council, principals, assistant principals, um technicians, executive assistants. So there's a whole wide wide range in there.
Uh, Mr. Brian?
Um, first off, I just wanted to say thanks for um explaining how we got from twenty-two million to four million. I was confused about it myself first coming out of the board and I thought that was very well explained. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, the question that I have, um, I guess kind of relates to the items that are on hold and I'm kind of curious, this isn't necessarily like a you know, we got to find the funding for this, but like I I think the terminology used was absorbing into our budget. Like, is there a scenario where like potentially we could absorb um existing FTE costs to to be repurposed for a different thing? So like the where I'm getting at is essentially the high school prep time. Like, I think we all know that we need to get the high school prep time done. But like, is there a situation where, you know, maybe for the next budget update, you know, you bring some scenarios for the board, if it's even feasible to do it and just say, you know, like here's some options for the board to consider. Certain positions could be repurposed such that we could get to the level of prep time that was uh proposed during the uh referendum, at least for the high school level. And then allow the board to, I guess, kind of like make a determination about, you know, like, is it even worth the cost of doing that repurposing? Because I I guess, you know, and I shared this with you before, I like the idea of, you know, having the board have some options and think about, you know, is this option worth the cost of of doing? And, you know, I think it would be help healthy, I think, even if, even if, again, even if these options are not feasible. At least we're having the discussion out in public so that we can talk about what our real, you know, you know, what the real needs are and why we are at such a loss right now with, you know, appropriately, you know, sourcing and purposing FTE.
Is it numerically possible? Yes. Is it administratively possible? That I'll defer to Dr. Weiss and.
Sure. Yeah, I know. One of the, one of the challenges of that and I, the analogy that always comes into my head is it's trying to make a king-sized bed with a queen-sized sheet. One of the corners is going to pop up, uh no matter how hard we try to stretch it and make it work. So the, if we add the, and this is just very rudimentary, if we add one group, uh and I think it would be like thirty-five teachers for high school, basically was three point five million somewhere in there. Uh, where those other thirty-five FTE come from is going to create a a shortage, a work that's going to get shifted to other employee employees. Um, exactly how that looks and what that turns into, it is very difficult. We could do our best to figure it out, but the amount and the volume of work that thirty-five FTEs shifting to other groups would be, I mean, that's basically what we came up with now with um with reductions due to enrollment. So is it possible? Yes. Are all the unintended consequences of a move like that known? I I don't think they are until it happens and then we've got second and third and fourth order um impacts that we can't always predict. So um, so the answer is we could do it, but I'm just not sure what the what the outcomes would be and that work would have to go to someone and with the prep time, would people on prep time now have to use that prep time to complete tasks that were being completed by others who have who are specialized in that area? So that's one of my just off-the-cuff thoughts right now.
Okay. Um, any other, yes, uh, Mrs. Adams and then back to Dr. Price.
Yeah, um, Mr. Hampton, are we, are we approving tonight on attachment be all one through twenty-three or just nineteen through twenty-three? I'm assuming it's all of them, correct?
It it's essentially nineteen through twenty-three. One through eighteen have pretty much occurred through the staffing process. But nineteen through twenty-three are individual kind of discussion points.
Okay, so that is what we're taking action on, then just that group. I I heard you mention that.
It's it's all of it to absorb into the budget, but for all intents and purposes, one through eighteen have already had action on them.
Okay, and um, one other question. So we're trying to um, find the four point four, but we're at four point eight with all of this, so.
Yeah, so that that puts you to the good couple hundred thousand, but remember the the margins that we're working on, that can swing very quickly.
Dr. Price?
Um, I mean, I think, uh, Mr. Brian hit some very important points that, um, it just seems to me that we're going to have to do something about teacher prep time. Um, maybe protecting what is there um already and um, I I I wince at the the cost. I'm just wondering if there's other ways that we can absorb that because it, I know even coming onto the board the first time that this has been a conversation since twenty eighteen. And I think it's uh behooves us to come up with some creative solutions and this is a very good um solution. I feel very comfortable with with much of it, but I just feel that teacher prep time is so important at the high school level in particular, that we're, we just really need to um do something. It's seven years that this conversation has been going on.
And it is a work in progress. Like, Mr. Brian stated earlier, we do not know the state budget yet. That will probably be.
Um, and I know we probably didn't need to approve the entire, um, and I know we probably didn't need to approve the entire thing, but I don't think it hurts to to restate it. If it does, let me know.
I wouldn't put a dollar amount because those are estimates and those are based on averages per FTE per position. So what we're showing you here are the FTE numbers for those staffing pieces. So if you you would make a recommendation like that, I would keep it to the FTE numbers.
Okay, so I would, I would amend that then to the FTE numbers. Um, so we, I would strike the um totaling the four million.
Okay, is that acceptable? For a second, who seconded it? Sabrina, okay. That, okay. Yes. All right. Further discussion? Yes.
Uh, I was just wondering about, I think it was the, in our academies at Indian Trail, you said they were going to like convert into pathways, correct? Are we able to go back to that side? I don't want to say anything.
Yes, great question. Would you explain, Mr. Hampton, the, actually, Dr. Weiss?
You know, yeah, school leadership. I'm working to pass that ball over to Mr. Hathcock.
Thanks. So, yeah, the, we, the discussion that's been out there is to uh change the, from the pathways that are, or sorry, the academies that are at Indian Trail to a a pathway model that would exist at all uh comprehensive high schools. And so um, students that are to start with, I'll say students that are in uh the the academies now would be allowed to finish, including students that were accepted into ninth grade already for next year. And so those students would be allowed to, but we wouldn't be bringing in after next year, we wouldn't be bringing in ninth graders for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, which is when we would start doing these, this pathway program at the comprehensive high schools um and at Lakeview Tech. And so, but just over the years, it's, we've kind of been making this transition gradually with declining enrollment. Uh, the numbers of students that have been in the academies has been going down, wait lists have been going down. Um, and so the plan is to have a uh a pathway program at all the high schools. Um, uh, the the Military Academy, by the way, is separate from what's there. The Military Academy has always been a little bit different than the other uh academies. The Military Academy has a couple of positions that are funded eighty percent by the military, so we're not talking about um the uh, the the Military Academy. Um, it saves a lot, money with busing, it saves money with uh just efficiency in terms of planning. Um, there's a lot of singletons that are, it's a scheduling term that talks about courses that are offered one time that uh teachers are are prepping for and and teaching one time. Um, and then there, it just creates a lot of schedules in a big high school. We could be more efficient with how we schedule those high schools. Uh, a lot of the classes that are in the academies are actually very similar. The academies doesn't have honors, but it has like advanced biology, well, we have honors biology. And so um, already there have been years where we had to merge kids um from the academies with kids that are in those regular uh, I'll call it comprehensive high school schedule because we didn't have enough students to run the class by itself. Uh, we're probably going to have to do some more of that, whereas we think that um what'll happen is students that follow in your footsteps at Indian Trail or Bradford or Trumper will be allowed to go to their home school and then they could take, I'd almost call it like a minor while you're in high school. You would take a series of elective classes uh that would allow you to get um, uh specialized classes um to to earn some credits, uh dual credits towards high school and college while you're still in high school, but it'd be available at all of our schools.
Okay. All right. One more question, Dr. Price?
Well, it it's not a question. I I just wanted to uh laud the decision to um make sure to give that increase to the WIAA officials. I know that's a small thing, but officials are what make our sports possible. And I just wanted to also offer that there are different internships going on at schools and universities where young people become officials and that might be something that, you know, we we look at because if you don't have officials there, you don't have sports. So um, I know there's a lot to talk about here, really, um, but I just wanted to bring that modest um observation up.
All right, here. Okay, Mrs. Stevens.
For the um Thesbian stuff, so that sounds like you're the the support of the going to the Thesbian yearly event. Is that, so they'd have to fund, students will have to fundraise?
Correct.
Additional funding. Okay. And it's about approximately two hundred dollars? Per student, is it, or how is it?
It depends how many people go that year.
But at this point, that's what's available in the budget. Do you know what, what they've spent over the last few years with that? Have they spent the full amount or?
Yeah, they've pretty much spent all of it and and then some, I'd say. Yeah, they've pretty much spent all of it and, and then some, I'd say.
Okay. And just to clarify, uh, that decrease is for next year? The, uh, students going to the thespian festival this year are covered. They will, starting.
There, there is none this year.
They're, they're going on a different trip this year. They're taking a few students on a different adventurous, um, musi- uh, uh, trip. Um, it's not at all connected with the thespian festival. So they're not doing that whatsoever this year.
Okay.
And we're not saying you don't have the opportunity to go.
Right.
We're not funding any future opportunities to go in the same way that we don't fund any other student organization group to go on a, um, a, 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 it, it, you know, an activity. They fundraise for that. Yep. They fundraise for that independent.
That's the, they're still gonna have the opportunity and everything, but they do have to fundraise for X amount of dollars. Okay. And then, um, with solo ensemble, you said three events is that?
So right now solo ensemble is funded all the way by KUSD. So if your student wanted to take part in one or six opportunities there, we would fund all of them. Um, it's grown quite large and we have some opportunity there to rein it in a bit. Uh, we, we host that, uh, solo ensemble. So by limiting it to three that we are going to pay for, we're not taking away the opportunity for students to enroll in six. But, um, oftentimes students would enroll in six and participate in three. And we've already committed the funds to it, not saying that that happens all of the time. But, um, it's very aggressive to enroll in six and, and prepare for six, um, very, um, so we, we felt three was more appropriate in many other districts around the area. Uh, parents have to, um, fund all of it. So we're trying to find a happy medium.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Can I just have clarification? So is everything except for the highlights, right? All the FTEs? Was, the motion was to approve all the FTEs?
Yeah, for the forty-two point eighty-four. Yeah. Yeah, um, it's here. Yeah. Yeah. Forty-two point eighty-four.
President Madam? Next, we have the adoption of instructional materials.
Um, just the next three items, I believe are action items and it only says discussion. Do we need to? On the agenda, it's, it has them as, oh, yeah, am I looking at the, maybe I'm looking at the other one. Oh, okay. I'm looking at the review. Thank you.
All right. That was revised, yes. All right. Next up, we have the, uh, adoption of instructional materials for sixth grade through eighth grade science.
Thank you. Jennifer Lawler, Coordinator of Secondary Science and Math, is here with me to discuss the adoption of the instructional materials for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science. So our curriculum adoption cycle begins by working with a team of educators, examining our current curriculum and student achievement data to determine necessary improvements. This process ensures that curricular expectations of the district and its schools are rigorous, relevant, and public. We align our curriculum to next-generation science standards. And we're moving forward with Open SciEd for grade six to eight science instructional material purchase. Ed Report is a review of educational resources and Open SciEd has an all-green, uh, indicators in its evaluation. Ms. Lawler can speak to what that really means. Um, and some of the highlights of Open SciEd include, um, it is phenomena-based learning. It's three-dimensional learning, student-centered instruction, and coherent storylines are developed. So teachers will access the lessons online. And we will supplement those lessons with professional development and all of the materials that teachers need to teach the lessons. We're currently developing a partnership with the Einstein Project. They're writing a grant to help support us in securing that professional development and, uh, some of those manipulative materials. And as I said, Ms. Lawler can explain anything in more detail or answer any questions.
Questions? Mrs., yeah, yeah, Landry. Sorry about that, Sabrina.
So how, how long before this is gonna be implemented? Is this gonna be for next school year?
So we will begin the implementation project, process next school year. Um, but it will actually take us three to four years to get to full implementation. As teachers add on, um, two to three new units each year. And we transition from a disciplinary curriculum to an integrated curriculum that also takes a process as students move through middle school. Um, so we're starting slow, um, and we'll support teachers, um, as we go.
So when will the, they be learning all of the material and things like that for next school year?
Yep. So we have a four-day summer institute that will be facilitated by the Einstein Project that teachers are compensated to attend. Um, if they're not able to make those specific days in district, there is a virtual opportunity with some different dates as well as other locations in the state that they could attend. Um, and then we'll provide ongoing professional learning throughout the school year.
Okay. Is, one more question. Is this something that could be like a, like a slower roll? Like, are there current materials right now that could be used, um, to have a slower rollout of this? So that teachers have more time besides just that four days or the virtual option? Because this seems like it'd be a lot to, to have to learn and.
So any new curriculum is a lot for teachers to make that transition to. I remember, I think I was five or six years into my career when we got a new high school math curriculum. And it was like being a first-year teacher all over again. I think we forget how hard that is, which is why that professional learning support is so important. Um, what we've learned from speaking to other districts who've implemented this as well as, um, Open SciEd or, um, and Einstein Project who supports the implementation is that it really is a learning by doing. And starting out with that first unit at the beginning of the year is really crucial because it, um, sort of orients students to the routines and procedures that are at the core, um, of these materials. So we're only asking teachers to teach two of their six units next year. Um, and so again, sort of one first semester, one second semester. They'll have, um, access to existing resources to sort of fill in the gaps as we make that transition again. Um, but we do, we have to start somewhere. And I, and also the recommendation is to implement that beginning unit soon after the professional learning, not to wait. Because it's fresh in teachers' minds and hopefully they're excited about it and ready to go. And it's a good way to start the school year off, um, setting those expectations from the beginning rather than trying to go back and do those things later on in the school year after, um, things have already been established.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Other questions? Mr. Price?
Uh, yeah, my colleagues' questions were good ones. I was just, on the curriculum can be, when I first got on this, on board, the, just out of curiosity, the Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, were those aligned with the next-generation science standards or roughly or? Not really.
So, so they, they claim to be. I think they were one of the first, um, materials kind of out of the gate when the NGSS were first rolled out nationally that claimed to be aligned. Um, Ed Reports has not given them. Um, I think they actually have a, an all-red rating from Ed Reports. So according to Ed Reports, they're not well-aligned, um, to the standards.
I appreciate that because, um, if you remember, and I'm sure you do, when Common Core came out, there was a flood of all these corporations that, oh, this is Common Core-ready and, yeah.
Yeah. Anybody can put a gold sticker on the cover and say it's aligned. That's why we really value the work that Ed Reports has started to do in helping us understand the quality of the materials that are on the market. And I think it's actually pushed the market to make their materials better.
No, I mean, from what I was able to glean, this looks really good, actually. I think, um, you know, can you say more about the learning kits and what's in it and, you know, what real science kids are gonna be doing?
Yeah. So, um, again, it really, um, the Einstein Project does a fantastic job of prepar- um, preparing these materials for teachers so that it is as ready to go as possible. The, uh, comment from their executive director was if a lesson calls for a thirty-inch piece of string, you get a thirty-inch piece of string, not a ball of string. So they really try and make it as ready to go as possible. It's, um, they're really looking at real-life examples. One of the examples is, um, students understanding like why sometimes when you drop your phone, the screen breaks and sometimes it doesn't. Um, obviously, we don't want them breaking their cell phone screens, so they get CD cases, um, which many of them have never seen before, right? Um, and they, they do experiments trying to figure out when a C, when that CD case will break and when it won't to help them understand forces and those kinds of things. So again, looking at real-world phenomenon. That's the, um, sort of NGSS, um, instructional model is to really root kids' science understanding and explaining how things in the real world happen.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Yes, Mrs. Stevens? Mr. Brian?
Quick question. Thank you, because I was just gonna build off that one. Um, so the explanation part, I love that. I love the, you know, integrating the real-world examples. Um, to what extent does this curriculum adoption include things like, uh, like real-life problem solving?
So there's a lot of, a big part of the NGSS is engineering design. That's one of the science and engineering practices. So kids are involved in designing solutions to real-world problems that they use what they've learned through this, investigating these phenomenon to now solve a novel problem.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mrs. Stevens?
So the two curriculum that they're going to, what two are they going to start with?
So, um, it depends by the grade level. So it'll be the first unit of the school year. So it's, um, six-one, seven-one, eight-one that they start with. Again, that's really built into establishing the ru- the routines and procedures. Um, and then again, our partners at, um, Einstein Project looked at the HMH scope and sequence that we've been teaching and sort of matched that up with the Open SciEd lessons to see what would be a good match for a unit for them to teach second semester. So that might be the third or fourth unit, um, in Open SciEd. And then they would teach, there'd be some HMH-less units that they wouldn't teach because those will be covered in other grade levels. And then they would fill in the content that wasn't covered. And we'll provide guidance for teachers on that so that they're, they're clear about what they're using.
All right. Uh, anybody? Yes.
Just the, they've got their four-day training. And then, um, what's the process then if they need more support?
Yep. So we'll also be working with our instructional coaches so that they can provide support. I'll be in classroom, visiting classrooms, um, providing feedback. Uh, we'll meet during, once a month, on the Friday afternoon collaboration time for middle schools where they can meet at grade levels. And then we'll also use the two, two of our four district professional learning days will be for, um, professional learning with Einstein Project.
Okay. Um, Dr. Price, any other board members who haven't spoken yet? Okay, Dr. Price?
Madam President, would like to make a motion. Okay. So I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education grant approval to purchase equipment kits to support the implementation of sixth grade through eighth grade Open SciEd curriculum materials as outlined in this report, including a P E T X C showing estimated purchase costs of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars and one-hundred-and-twenty for materials.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. That takes us to policy thirty-four twenty, purchasing, first reading.
Good evening again. I'm joined with, by, uh, Lisa Salo, Accounting Manager, who did a lot of the research and work on these policy updates, in case of questions. But we'll walk you through a couple of the highlights on your cover pages. Gives you the essence of the recommended changes. There are some recommendations to change some of the dollar thresholds contained in the policies. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to give you some highlights.
Um, currently, our purchasing policy, uh, was last revised in twenty-eighteen. And as a result, we were reviewing it and, um, determined that there are some threshold upgrades that needed to be, um, uh, implemented, um, as a result of, uh, the guidance, um, from the federal government regarding uniform grant guidance. Um, what we are proposing is that our current micro purchase, uh, threshold of five thousand dollars be increased to less than ten thousand dollars. A small purchase, um, between five thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is currently, be proposed and changed to ten thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars. And large purchases, um, greater than twenty-five thou- thousand dollars, which is current, and change that to greater than seventy-five thousand dollars. We, uh, this policy also, um, provides, uh, the internal control procedures over the signing authority. Um, and what the purchasing agent and, um, can sign for and what needs to come to the Board of Education. Currently, any, um, items that are over fifty thousand, uh, are under fifty thousand, excuse me, the purchasing agent is able to sign for. Anything over fifty thousand dollars currently comes to the Board. We are proposing that, that threshold is increased to seventy-five thousand for contracts.
Yes. Dr. Price?
Uh, so, uh, actually, I'm rather curious about this because of the, what I see with the federal government becoming more intrusive on, um, our spending. Um, this is aligning with current federal government policy or as?
Actually, um, if you turn to Attachment A,
Right.
you will see that the federal government has actually, their thresholds are much, much more significant than ours. Um, they require Board approval at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Um, micro purchases, um, are at ten thousand. Small purchases go all the way up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And anything requiring a bid or proposal is greater than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So our thresholds are significantly lower than the federal government's recommendations.
Yeah. And, and, and so as a, one of the big five districts, we're, we're pretty scrupulous on our accountability. That's the main thing, right?
Yes. Um, Attachment A shows, um, several different, uh, districts that are very, very close to our size and what they do. And we, ours fall somewhere within that range.
Mr. Brian?
Um, in changing these, all of these, uh, levels, um, I'm curious about how this will impact, um, competitive bidding specifically, um, especially with relation to like how it might impact the ability of like local businesses or like minority-owned businesses to be able to, uh, compete for business in KUSD.
So in regards to, um, doing, um, a bid, um, in regards to micro purchases, we require two quotes, um, and we require justification for those purchases. So we are still trying to be competitive, um, just not going through the bid process, which is a lengthy, um, it, it can take some time to go through that, uh.
I'd, I'd even say it could help some of the local people. Sometimes they get intimidated by the RFP process. So raising that threshold to say that under seventy-five thousand, we can take bids and we can do a little less formal process before making the decision, might actually help some of the local.
Do we have, um, preference for local or minority-owned? Because like I know the state of Wisconsin does that for.
It, it can be part of the rubric. So there is some, it's a factor in the rubric. It's not the only thing. Right. Yeah.
Well, here's my request to put that in the rubric, but that's all I had.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, Administration, uh, to approve revised policy in Rule Thirty- I'd like to make a motion to administration to approve revised policy in Rule 3420, Purchasing as its first reading on May 27, 2025, and a second reading on June 24, 2025, to be effective July 1, 2020, 25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion's made and seconded. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Bringing us, thank you, bringing us to Asset Management and Policy 3801.
Take it away.
Okay. Current, our current policy in Rule 3800 is called Asset Management. And what that policy establishes is, one, our threshold for what we capitalize as capital assets within our financial statements. It also discusses different types of inventories. Just recently, again, the federal government and under Uniform Grant Guidance has increased the fixed asset threshold to $10,000. We're currently at $5,000. So when I took a look at this policy and did some research with other districts, I found that our policy really needed to be split into two different policies. So one, for capital assets and the thresholds, and then into a separate policy, we would put inventory. And that's what has been presented here to you tonight. The Capital Assets Policy 3800, we are changing the threshold from $5,000 to $10,000. And we are then creating a new policy, 3801, for inventory.
Questions? Mr. Bryan?
With regard to both of these policies, the changes and then the implementing of the new policy, does this impact how like federally funded assets are reported or monitored?
Federal assets are, capital assets are reported to DPI and for federal grants. And then if we have a direct federal grant, those are reported a separate way.
Okay, and then I guess do you anticipate any sort of like challenges and like how it could be implemented across schools or building sites?
No, they're, changing this threshold really is not going to change any existing internal controls or processes. The only thing that's changing is the threshold itself.
Okay.
So for example, where we would purchase, let's say we purchased a vehicle and we purchased it for $6,000, it was a used vehicle. Under our current policy, we would have to capitalize that in our financial statements. Under the new policy, it would be considered under that threshold and we would not capitalize it in our financial statements.
Okay, thank you.
In practice, we're not changing anything that anybody's doing at the schools?
No.
It won't be a burden on them?
All right. Mrs. Landry?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the revised and renamed policy in Rule 3800, Capital Assets, and approve the creation of Policy 3801, Inventory, as a first reading on May 27, 2025, and a second reading on June 24, 2025, to be effective, to be effective July 1, 2025.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Bringing us to Mr. Keckler and the Approval of Policy 5118, Removal of Policy 5118.1 and 5118.3, and he's going to explain all that.
Thank you. Policy 5118.1 is promotion and 5118.3 is acceleration retention. Those are being removed and will be replaced with Policy 5118, which will now encompass the decision-making process of promoting and accelerating students. This policy is a collaboration of teaching and learning, school leadership, and Office of Educational Accountability, that's why we are all here. Quite a few coordinators worked on this project and Stacy Cortez, Elementary Math and Science Coordinator, was gracious enough to hang around tonight to help us with any questions you might have. So this process outlines that a team will go through a, go through to determine if a student should be considered for withholding promotion or acceleration. The process includes parent or guardian notification, a data and risk consideration process, data analysis of student progress, and then the decision-making and communication of that decision. I do want you to take a look at page 3B in the policy. So that would be page.
98.
Thank you. We need to add, we have, we have three mistakes in your version as we were reviewing this the other day. It says, it's in the rule, if you look at the rule. Is anyone having page 75, I believe? Oh, wait. 98 in the packet, my fault. We have, after the first sentence, we need to add, the student is promoted. So it should read, the parents or guardians disagree that withholding promotion is more appropriate than promotion with support and services. And then the student is promoted. So if a parent disagrees with the team's recommendation and does not want to hold that student withhold promotion, then we would promote. So we wouldn't go against a, a parent's wish. We have another mistake that we, we need to, it's on page four of the rule. Number three. After the last sentence of number three, we are going to add, at this time, the principal will make a determination, outline supports, and notify the parent or guardian. We, number three just cut off without that sentence, making a determination and then communicating that determination. So that would be the full piece of that.
So this is a first read and those corrections will appear for the second read?
Yes.
Okay.
They will. And then we have one more, the la, very last sentence in this rule. Such appeals should be submitted in writing to the Office of Teaching and Learning as soon as reasonably possible, after the parent or guardian is informed of the district's decision, but no more than 30 days after being notified by the principal of the decision of the school term in which the decision applies. So we kind of had it flipped prior to the school year starting, and that would be way too late. We need to say 30 days after the decision is made. So I apologize for those errors in this first read.
And we'll make sure to get those corrections out to the Board after.
We can have them tomorrow.
We can get them out to you right away.
I can send them out to you tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
All right, questions? Mr. Bryan?
So before the determination is communicated and made, how do we ensure that the measures that are being used in making that determination are as objective as possible?
So that team's review of the multiple data points would be that insurance. So the team is made up of not only one person, it would be the principal, the classroom teacher, possibly an interventionist, any other support person that would have information, and the parent as well. And then we, through our tier-three process, we know that the interventions that are being used on a day-to-day basis are reliable, valid, and administered with fidelity through the checks and balances we have within our tier-three system already.
Okay, and then one more. How do we, through this policy, ensure that there's equitable access for acceleration or promotion opportunities for other serves students? And conversely, what supports are in place for accelerated students, like socially, emotionally, things like that?
So this process that they, that Ms. Tindell spoke of with the tier-three team, we have been doing that for, well, since I've been in this position for three years now, probably longer. And a lot of times, the coordinators or someone from the district level will be asked to sit on those teams, kind of to, to give the input. And then as far as the data that's reviewed, we have a very succinct process as far as looking, and I'm speaking of acceleration, of what that protocol is and what is used as far as the data to make those determinations. And I think Ms. Tindell spoke of who makes up the team. A lot of times, the teacher that is in front of the student is on that team. And a lot of times, they're the ones that actually are recommending that student for that.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Okay, my motion is going to be to approve Policy 5118, Promotion/Acceleration, as a first reading at the May 27, 2025, regular Board meeting, then refer it to a standing committee prior to a second reading at a regular Board meeting. And I'll explain why if I get a second on that.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
Okay, my, my reasoning for that, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have said with the corrections.
Yes.
With the correction. But my reasoning for that is these new policies are, are so long, you know, when I see all the red on all the strikeouts, I think we need to really give these new policies a look and have our committees that are made up of community members and Board members take a, take, you know, take a look at it and see if they have any recommendations for us as a Board before we approve it as a second reading. And, and also just to, you know, I know our, our committee members, our stand committee members are anxious to, to work and help, you know, the district. And I think this gives them an opportunity. So I'll just say that when I see a first reading, I'm probably going to want to refer it to a, a standing committee if it's lengthy and as important as this one is, promotion, acceleration of students. And I just think it's, it's, it's wise to take a close look. And one of the reasons why is because then it just gets put on the consent agenda at the next meeting. And it gets approved without discussion. The entire consent agenda usually just flies by. And so we're really not discussing it, you know, at the second reading.
Okay, further discussion on this?
Could, can I suggest the Curriculum Committee then, if that's the committee?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Bryan?
And I support the, the motion. And the reason why I say that is, you know, with the caveat, like, you know, we're not trying to slow anything down. And I don't think that's your intention either, Ms. Adams. Conveniently, we do have a committee meeting scheduled for June before the, the June Board meeting in which we have a second reading anyway. So I think it would just be a good time to, to bring that forward and have another set of eyes on it.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Chair?
No.
Okay. Two noes, chair votes aye, motion passes. Bringing us to the next one.
So the next policy is a brand-new policy, 5119, third grade to fourth grade promotion of students on a reading plan. So it's a very specific niche of student. This is a requirement of Act 20. It's a requirement for districts to write a policy for when to promote a student who has not satisfied their third-grade personal reading plan by the end of third grade. So we're talking about students who have scored below the 25th percentile and had been in a reading plan and has not met the requirement to exit that reading plan. And that requirement would be to pass the, to be proficient on the reading portion of the Wisconsin Forward Exam. So after those test results would be in is when we would refer to this policy. So this is broken up into three sections. The first section is the Promotion Policy. So this has to be, districts have to adopt this policy, but it does not have to take effect until, well, ours were proposing to take effect in the '26, '27 school year. And the reason for that is because summer school has to be redesigned. If you read through this policy, you would, you would see that summer school needs to be an intensive summer school with interventions continuing. And we need some time to do that. Within that Section 1, we outline the process to determine eligibility for promotion even when they have not satisfied that reading plan, and to assess the factors that may have led to the student's lack of completion of the reading plan. Section 2 is the Process for Decision-Making. There are good cause exemptions. We look at the data and risk considerations, and then the parent notification process. Section 3 includes what we would do post-promotion. So if promoted, what kinds of intensive interventions or instructional services and supports would continue into fourth grade, monitor that progress, and then offer that intensive summer school. Again, this is a new policy. We brought these both forward together because the process within, we tried to mirror the processes what, as best we could, holding tight to what the requirements of Act 20 were, and holding tight to the processes that Stacy alluded to that we actually do go through when we consider withholding a promotion or accelerating a student.
Yes, Dr. Weiss?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to with this policy that the, as part of Act 20, the DPI was required to come up with a model policy that was reviewed by WASBE in order for state compliance on Act 20. So there was a, we, I mean, something like this could go to committee, but we really are, I, I just wanted to add that DPI and the WASBE had to really work with their, their attorneys to get it tight. So I'm not sure how much we want to deviate legally from what, you know, how much we can deviate and still be within legal compliance on this policy. I just felt the need to add that because there was quite a bit of conversation about it.
Okay, Dr. Price?
Yeah, I, I mean, the policy, I, I read it carefully. It, it's very much reflecting this intensification of focus on third graders because of the research, which indicates if they're not reading at grade level, they're really in a challenging place. It seems, can, can you say more about the exceptions, though? There seem to be many, many exceptions. And it's interesting because I know that the science of reading is kind of to make sure that kids aren't promoted before they're reading at grade level, but there's several different exceptions here. I'm not saying one is better than the other. It's important that kids read, but this is quite involved in terms of the exceptions and the. It's important that kids read, but this is quite involved in terms of the exceptions in the process from what I, from my reading.
So those good cause exceptions really allude to students who have significant needs or needs beyond, students who are, who are receiving other supports beyond what the classroom teacher gives them in Tier 1. For example, if you are a multilingual learner, you're included in that good cause exemption. If you have an IEP and you do not take the state assessments, that would be another good cause. If you have an IEP and you are on an alternative assessment other than the Wisconsin Forward assessment, that would have to be a consideration. If you've already been in intensive interventions for two years plus, we could promote based on knowing that you were serviced with intensive intervention. You may have been making progress. Your trend line is where it should be, but you have not passed that part of the reading test. So it would be for students who fall under those types of categories, not saying that you haven't made progress, you, you have not passed the third grade or the, the reading portion of the Wisconsin Forward test, and you have a reading plan. So that's why the good cause exemptions are in, or exceptions are in there. And it's not to say that you, you, you would always promote, but those have to be considerations that the team does discuss when considering promoting.
So it's more, more granular, identify what kids need versus just labels of this child doesn't pass the test?
Yep, and it's really to ensure that the schools are doing their due diligence in interventions, making sure that when they're in interventions, we're responding to their progress or lack of progress and changing an intervention or continuing the intervention because they are making great progress, but simply have not passed that, that state requirement of passing the reading portion of that Forward test.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Bryan?
I guess this is a two-pronged question. Is there a way to monitor, and maybe this is like organically as a result of Act 20, but is there a way to monitor whether certain groups of students are just disproportionately affected by retention, you know, maybe as a result of this policy? And then, does, is KUSD able to track, like, how many students are promoted under the policy alongside their reading outcomes?
We absolutely would be able to track that and track the, the success of promoting without satisfying their, their personal reading plan. The state's intention was, was to, they were very careful not to talk, to, to enforce a retention policy. It's very much a promotion policy. So really leaning into what are schools doing to get kids to make progress and promote them with that progress, even though they have not satisfied the, the testing requirement. Mr. Kackler can talk more about the tracking.
So over the years, Kenosha United has significantly reduced the number of students that have been retained. It's basically been on the singletons the last couple of years and primarily driven by parents' desire to retain for any number of reasons. This specifically speaks of, of elementary age, but we've sometimes had parents request high school-age students to be retained mainly for sports benefits so that they could get another year of sports under their belts. But we, we much prefer to work with interventions and supportive strategies. You're going to see in another couple of agenda items, a proposal for adopting a, a new analytics program that would greatly enhance our ability to track this in any number of areas that we could certainly be on the lookout for, for any disproportionality for specific demographic groups as well. Thank you.
Further question? Yes, Mrs. Andrew?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy 5119, Third Grade to Fourth Grade Promotion for Students with a Reading Plan as a First Reading at the May 27, 2025 Regular Board Meeting and as a Second Reading at the June 24, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
Okay, second, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mrs. Stevens?
Just discussion piece, because this is new and, and it's new to everybody. I was just looking at what we can do to bring attention and awareness to this new policy and the changes at the state. So if we could refer it to the curriculum, the same curriculum committee that's going to review those other policies. Dr. Weiss had mentioned that there might be an issue with that.
The issue would just be with making changes to it because, like I said, the WASBE and the DPI, if it's for promotion or information, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I'm, I'm just, I don't know how much we'd be, how mu, I, I guess I'm less comfortable diving in and, and changing parts of it just based on the guidance that we've gotten.
And this will give us a yard and promote this to the parents respective to those grade levels to help them understand through the, both their elementary teachers as well as the, the schools and the teaching and learning department. So we're going to have plenty of time to help promote that and answer any questions for parents ahead of time.
And, and I'm just requesting to add it to that agenda for the curriculum, not making changes to it based on what, I think the awareness piece is really something needed. And I think it will also help people understand this, this is the way we have to operate.
So we're going to, we're going to keep the motion as is with the recommendation to Dr. Weiss that we promote it in the curriculum meeting.
Yeah, just to help build more awareness and clarity on it.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further?
Friendly amendment.
I, I don't think it even needs to be an amendment. Dr. Weiss has written it down.
Very good, okay.
So, all right. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Bringing us to the update of Policy 6470, Student Records.
Madam President, members of the board, this is kind of a, partnered with a policy that was updated by the school board last fall in relation to records retention. So this specifically deals with student records and, and the various types of records that we have, an enormous amount that are catalogued within our student information system as we continue to transcribe these from physical documents to our internal digital system and the way that we both curate and archive and retain those records as well as parents' rights for accessing and/or challenging them. So this is in not only relation to that, aligning it with the falls, changes that were made for the records retention, but also the WASBE recommendations related to student records. There's quite a bit on this one and, and alignment, so there's a lot more red to make it look like there's a lot of changes, but it's taking sections and just aligning them for a little bit easier readability. Happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Kackler? Okay, hearing none.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
A motion that the administration recommends that the Board of Education review and approve the listed revisions for policy in Rule 6470, Student Records, as a first reading at the May 27, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting and a second reading at the June 24, 2025 Regular School Board Meeting.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded, discussion, Mrs. Adams?
Yes, and, and I can, I can support that. I would just, it's just as a comment, I would just like for, for us to, when we do second readings, to not include them in the consent agenda. I do understand we can pull them off and vote on them separately, but the practice of always putting the second reading on the consent agenda, I think, you know, just having it on as an agenda item will give us a little bit more, you know, more, I don't know, can't find the right word, but I think we'd be more, we'd opt more to discuss it a little bit more if we have any questions and if we just include it on the consent agenda. So that's just my, my comments on, on that. And that's one of the reasons, I think, that the second readings usually just fly by. We don't really discuss those items.
All right. Any further discuss, yes, Mr. Bryan?
Wasn't going to get away without asking a question. On the content of the policy, is there, it is a lot of, you know, red lines and stuff like that, but is there explicit, like, does the policy include, like, explicit exceptions where records can be disclosed without prior consent? And are there references to, like, the statutory provisions, like in FERPA or IDEA, where, like, does the annual notice and amendment provisions and things like that?
Certainly, very good question. So there are certain things that do not require parental consent. For example, the most common one is what's called directory data. And so we provide that as a required field for our annual online registration that parents or guardians must complete when they submit that process for the upcoming school year. And that directory data has existed for decades, and it usually covers basic contact information, enrollment, basic enrollment information, grade level, schools. And it's used in any number of fashions, from, from military personnel to, you know, Chuck E. Cheese or the, the Boys and Girls Club might have a eighth-grade girls' basketball clinic coming up for the summer. So they, we'd get a request to say, can we have everybody that's, parents have approved that? And, and that helps with their mailers and, and direct marketing campaigns. And so we have had, over the years, more families choose not to supply that information, which is certainly their right, and we honor that. There is a clause that the milit, the federal government, the military do get access to those. So that's kind of one of the, the common ones. Obviously, there's different levels of that information. You know, we, we publish when students graduate, so that's kind of public knowledge as it is, the student's name in a graduation program. But then you have different tiers of information, so it's a little bit more protected, special ed statuses, economically disadvantaged status, things of that nature. And so those, those kind of are treated with, with higher levels of security and scrutiny. And, and we have to be mindful of that in, in those areas. We do provide annual notices to, to parents through that FERPA piece as well as annual notices to students at the start of each school year and then when they are onboarded. But we are expanding those as well. We're just going to be adding some revisions, actually, in the very near future to those notices related to behavioral records and how those apply.
Thank you, very good.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the contract in aggregate of $50,000, NextPath.
I think we have Ms. Castillo joining us.
We do. So Jodi Castillo, the Coordinator of Learning Systems, is with us tonight to discuss implementing a comprehensive data platform. We're asking for approval to spend $94,000 out of the teaching and learning budget to secure a, a contract with NextPath. This is a data platform. It's a teacher data dashboard in which they will seed student data to analyze data, to inform their instruction, and, and help them on a day-to-day in the classroom. It removes barriers, it gives teachers time back. We currently spend a lot of time pilfering through a lot of data in a lot of different platforms. And this is a one-stop shop where all of those data pieces are, are held and can be manipulated very easily. And it overall will support student learning. It is tied to our high-leverage practice within our district and school improvement plans, high-leverage practice number six, which is using data to inform instruction, which is obviously directly related to our academic goal of improving proficiency levels by 12%. This is intended to empower educators by making the data readily available. So currently, a teacher needs to access, like I said, multiple systems in order to gather student data. Teachers spend a lot of time doing that and organizing it and then making those instructional decisions. That's what their collaboration or PLC time that you, you hear about often, that's what they are doing during that time. So this is intended to aid decision-making. There is a portion of this, this product that gives insights. It provides a narrative on what the next instructional step will be for those students. It guides Tier 1 and Tier 2 to personalize how to differentiate instruction for students. It has built-in features to support Act 20, I'm going to repeat that one. This is a product out of Janesville, I believe. So the, the product design has intentionally included many of our state-mandated pieces of Act 20, where we, this past year, have tried to recreate or create some of those pieces in very clunky ways, using a lot of manpower to do that. This product, the NextPath platform, has those components built right into it, which obviously allows to greater efficiencies with our personal reading plans, our parent communications, our reports, our surveys, the acknowledgements, and the progress monitoring that our teachers and our administrators and our parents are informed on. So NextPath is clearly something that we are excited about. Jodi is here, she can speak to ways in which we've gotten stakeholders in front of this product to get feedback and talk about the implementation process also.
Uh, questions? Mrs. Stevens?
So it sounds like it's a, a great program for what, what we actually, our needs are now, right? So just a quick question on the, the vendors. What platforms will be, like, we won't have to use any longer? Do you have the, a list of, like, or an estimate of how much, I mean, it costs money to do all that? I'm just wondering if it'll be a positive from that side, too?
It will, thank you for asking that question. It removes a lot of barriers and challenges with multiple platforms. So for example, language plans are held somewhere completely separate. This has the capacity to hold all our multilingual learner plans in one place and combines it so that we can compare data. Our Tier 3 system, Act 20 plans, they can all be housed in here. That means we can look at that data comparatively very easily. Click of a button, teacher has access to that right away. They don't have to ask for it, they don't have to find, build a spreadsheet for it, it is all right there. So that's one that it takes away from getting rid of MAP. A lot of principals use that to inform Wisconsin Forward results. This platform will allow us to look at Wisconsin Forward data in detail by subject area and allow teachers to really use that to inform instructional decisions in a much more efficient way. The other, ESGI, was another platform we used. Again, teachers loved it, but it's a separate platform. This will allow us to gather our common formative assessment data that aligns to our curriculum, our curriculum assessments, and we can put it in here. We can lay it next to Wisconsin Forward, we can lay it next to our reading plans. It will be in one place and allow us to look holistically at our students and make decisions for them.
Other questions? Oh, yes, Mrs. Adams?
Yes, so is this, are we approving tonight just the one-year, the one-year renewal? And then there'll be another two years?
This would be for the initial three-year contract.
So the $94,000 is for the three years?
Each year, it's an annual cost projected.
$94,000 each year?
And, and, and similar to earlier, it's, it's the expected amount because this is a per pupil one, again, not knowing exactly the final number that it'll be applicable to that we have, but that is, that is the ballpark.
Mr. Bryan?
One more, one more question, though. So do we have a three-year contract with them?
Pending board approval, yes.
So we will be, we were actually approving a three-year contract with the first year, well, every year being estimated to be $94,000.
It, it locks in that per pupil rate.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bryan?
Is technical support and training included in $94,000?
It does, there, there is an extremely nominal fee of just $500. They're actually doubling that starting this summer. It, it's a small amount. That's basically for an onboarding procedure. They're very familiar as being a Um, that's basically for an onboarding procedure. They're very familiar as being a Wisconsin company. They're very familiar with Infinite Campus, which is, which is our, uh, student information system. Um, there's our internal assets, uh, multiple people in the Information Services Department, which will do a lot of that onboarding and, and also members of educational accountability. We have to do the data validation and it's that point that we work through the onboarding piece and that training then coincides with kind of the front-end end-user piece of it that was more in the teaching and learning side that Ms. Castillo talked about and that she would coordinate in relation to a development of templates, uh, standardization of, uh, expectations, various models, um, things of that nature that, that kind of go along with it. So they do provide technical support, um, but we also are, are going to be their largest district if the board approves this contract.
Okay. And then is there a way to monitor the effectiveness of the contract? Because, you know, if it goes well, I'm assuming that we may eventually at some point renew and contract costs may go up and things like that.
Yeah. The return on investment for something like this is, it's, it's going to be in the amount of time that's saved for the teachers in that standpoint. So for example, with the ACT twenty requirement that was placed upon this district, this board earlier this year, earlier this year approved a stipend for the elementary teachers. I think for a hundred and six thousand dollars total that, that was approved. And, and so having this automated through the Ames Plus, Ames Web Plus platform into this, uh, most likely will remove that, that amount, uh, that, that the district took on. And so, um, the time savings in relation to just that alone, um, you know, does present a benefit to the staff. But, uh, we expect continual growth and continual expansion of the features related to this. Um, there, there's other portions of this, uh, for, that, uh, um, weren't mentioned. Like we had the, uh, state access to a dropout early warning system through DPI that the secondary schools used, which, which was used quite a bit. Uh, and then the state dropped the funding for it. And then if you go to the part of the website on DPI, it says districts are encouraged to find their own program moving forward. So it's just one of those that used to benefit us at the state level and now we have to kind of develop something internally.
Okay. And are there data privacy protections that exist in the platform?
Yeah. So anytime we work with, uh, integrating student data, there's con-, and part of that contract negotiation, uh, you know, between best efforts and then part of our technical evaluation is, uh, uh, um, an evaluation of where the data is stored, um, uh, cybersecurity processes and protocols are in place. So yeah, that's all covered.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Can I make a, make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to accept administration's, um, recommendation, approve a three-year contract in approximate amount of ninety-four thousand per year, beginning July first, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you. The instructional calendar.
Yep. This is the, um, presentation of the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven instructional calendar. When this board meeting will probably end, uh, and, uh, we follow a similar format that we've had for the last several years. Um, we do have some, uh, adjustments in here related to winter break and spring break, um, in the calendar, uh, adjusting accordingly to meet the state mandate for instructional minutes. Um, with the conversion of our, uh, previous charter schools, uh, that were either merged or made into K-A choice programs, they now have to adhere to the state mandate for instructional minutes. Um, so they, their calendars will align and then it also retains the board's directive, um, recent directive that Frank Elementary Alternative Instructional Calendar, continue with what's been consistent for the, for the last several years of starting approximately one month earlier. Uh, we do gather input and feedback from our stakeholders. Uh, and so this fall, we will be convening a, a committee and, and most likely a survey as well out to those stakeholders where we look at some of those optional items that relate to things such as parent-teacher conferences, early release Fridays, uh, length of time and duration for breaks. Um, you know, winter break, everybody kind of likes it when it's two full weeks and other times, you know, spring break could be variable. There's, there's been kind of a recent push again to have all of the CISA, the, the southeastern area districts aligned for spring breaks, for example. So we'll work on, working on, we'll work on developing that for the two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight proposal. But this is pretty consistent for our last couple of years.
Questions from, yes, Mrs. Landry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept school board review and accept the proposed instructional calendar for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven at, at its May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular school board meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Bringing us to open enrollment. Mr. Keckler?
Thank you, Madam President. My final item tonight is the board's, uh, annual requirement to approve the recommendations related to the open enrollment applications. You have before you, uh, the process that started in January where the board identified a hundred and ninety-six spaces district-wide, eighteen of which were designated for special education. And then this chart goes through the, uh, post-three-month open window, open enrollment window process and our lottery that was also held, um, and the numbers that were associated with it as well as, uh, those offerings. So the vast majority of applicants, uh, are recommended to have spots, um, offered to them pending the board's approval of this. Then we would notify those families. Uh, they could have applied up to three districts, non-resident districts, and then they have a, a couple of weeks to make that decision, usually by the end of June, um, for a decision to hear back and then we work through the enrollment process.
Any questions for Mr. Keckler? Mrs. Landry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept, oh, I lost. Where is it? Oh my goodness. Okay. Uh, administration recommends approval of applicants identified as numbers one, two, three, four, five, six.
I mean, yeah, you, you don't need to read all of it.
One through seventy-six, uh, due to available space at the grade level school requested and special education or related services required by the IEP. Administrator, administration recommends, recommends denial of application applicants identified as numbers twelve, fifty-three, sixty-four, due to one of the following reasons. Overcapacity at the grade level, special education-related services required by the IEP, limitation of schools requested, age and eligibility, habitual truancy or expulsion in the current or proceeding to, or proceeding to years.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to board goal setting.
Yep.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, before the board goal setting, this is just a follow-up on a March thirteenth, uh, special board meeting in which our WASB consultant, uh, presented the outcome of a self-assessment that the board took. Uh, coming out of that meeting and subsequent meetings, uh, four goals were identified and I, um, was tasked with coming up with what the metrics would be, uh, to determine whether or not the board, um, met their goals. The first two goals in your packet, um, were fairly straightforward and how I, uh, came, came up with identifying whether or not those goals were met in the area of culture. Valuing the differences of opinion and not letting them denigrate into personality conflicts. There is a state, uh, the district has an average, the state has an average. So the target is to meet or exceed the state average, um, on the self-assessment. And similarly for the, uh, second goal, um, value-positive relationships with superintendent and fellow board members. Um, it is to meet or exceed the Wisconsin average for those, uh, for those two questions based on the self-assessment that's, uh, available statewide for districts, um, and school boards to take. The next two got a little bit trickier though. Uh, there really wasn't a particular question on the survey that relates to seeking parent input on ideas for workshops or after-school events or, uh, planning, supporting regular check-ins with the board on community outreach. Ms. Ruder and I had some conversations about that because that's some of the work that her department does, but I'm not sure if that's with the board. If we wanted to maybe look at attendance at, I think that was an idea that came up at our agenda review meeting, was attendance at some of the after-school, um, events that are planned by, um, by, uh, yes, by, uh, Lori, what's, I'm forgetting Lori's name, Lori McDonald.
I don't know.
Um, uh, you know, maybe it's, um, attendance at some of those programs, um, could be a way to, um, to get a metric out, you know, something empirical, we can count up and, um, identify if a goal has been met. Uh, but other than that, I, I listed this as discussion. If that was something that the board would like to pursue or if there, if I was off-target on what you were looking, what was meant by those two goals.
Okay, board input. Dr. Price?
Oh, I, I was just going to, um, advocate for those, um, regular check-ins with the board on community outreach. I know some of my colleagues, especially our new board members, have been visiting and doing all kinds of outreach and I think that's great. I think the community needs to see the board. And, um, when we're not crazy busy, it's great to go to these schools like Ms. Madder and Sabrina. And I went to recently to see these kids advocating at one of the schools and just, just whatever we can do to, uh, show our faces and that's all.
Other comments? Mrs. Adams?
Yeah, um, I would like, as we talk about community outreach, I would like to see us expand to some of the new audiences that, you know, we don't traditionally reach. Um, and which ones those are, you know, I'd have to give that some thought, but I know we're missing a lot of people. So I'd like to see us do a more community outreach to those individuals that we have not reached.
Other comments? Yes.
Um, just, or comment, just something that's been on my mind for a while and, uh, some me and a lot of classmates talk about. And even when I talk to my principal, it comes up. I think, or, and I'll correct me if I'm wrong, just I think maybe outreach towards students as well or just conversations with students I feel would help.
Yes.
Give a lot more, uh, input and insight on this progress with a lot of things you guys are implementing. I like, uh, I like a lot of stuff y'all are saying. I felt like as a student, it was definitely, it's definitely nice to hear. And I just think a lot more students would like to just be more in the know, direct instead of like hearing from a friend of a friend that heard from someone else.
Thank you, Demarcus. Yes, Mrs. Stevens?
Just as a follow-up, is that we used to, Carl, I don't know if you were on the board then or not, but we used to have like, um, we'd go meet, the board would, we'd have a, a set time and place and the superintendent was getting, um, with a school to get students that would attend this meeting with the board and the board would go directly to the schools and then we would listen to. And it, it really follows kind of exactly what you were telling me. And, um, I can't remember how long we did it, but I think we had a change in superintendent's or something and it was lost in the shuffle. But I agree, it's really important to hear from our students. So something like that might be something that would be a good opportunity.
Okay. Any other?
I'd also like to say I like the workshop ideas too and what they're doing because that's all covered under the Fun Eighty, um, what they do. So it's like, everybody's welcome. You don't have to be going to that particular school. If you find out like they're having soup, like we went and served soup and, um, we had people from different schools too for the elementary level, so.
All right, Mr. Bryan?
I mean, I, I guess if we're trying to figure out like, uh, how to assess how we do that, I, I mean, I'm wondering if like as a baseline, maybe what we could say is something like, at least as far as the community outreach piece, um, you know, each board member will, um, you know, uh, attend at least, I don't know, three community events in a year or something like that. You know, maybe something that they don't normally go to, um, to engage with the community better. Um, and you know, if we have like a mid-year check-in or something like that, school board members can report on the things that, you know, they attended, what they learned, you know, the feedback they received, um, things like that. Because I think to your point, it's exactly right. That's why I ran for school board. I was seventeen years old at the time, the first time around, uh, because I didn't think the school board was listening too much. I think that, you know, it's really good that we have, you know, that meaningful dialogue, uh, you know, between the school board and, uh, students, the school board and, you know, teachers, school board and, uh, parents. Um, so, you know, we get that insight from groups of people that we don't normally see in a, in a board meeting. Um, I think that's, I think that would be very meaningful. Um, and then I'll just also reiterate as far as community outreach goes. I know that there's some logistical things that need to be ironed out, but, uh, you know, at the last agenda review meeting, um, I suggested in terms of community outreach, what we could look at is the schools that, you know, maybe have AV equipment, you know, like the projectors, you know, microphones, things like that. That, you know, we make an effort to at least, you know, maybe three, four times a year, have school board meetings in the schools so that we have a chance to meet with staff, meet with parents, uh, meet with students and learn about what's going on in their schools specifically. And just meet people where we're at, you know, because centering us around, you know, like why we're really here in, in the first place and, you know, who we're making decisions on behalf of is critically important. So those are just my suggestions.
Good discussion. All right, there is no action on this item, so, uh, we'll just leave it there. And when, when will we report on it next?
So I, I'm hearing, I'm wondering what we, if what we could do is as board members communicate through the superintendent's office that they'll be attending community events, that we can tabulate that and get baseline data for you as a start? Just to, for record-keeping and since we do that already, I think that might be easy data to mine.
Yes, we, we, we do contact Denise and so she has a record of where we've been and stuff.
Maybe, and, okay.
All right. And that brings us to our resolution on Juneteenth.
Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, proclaiming all individuals enslaved in Confederate territory to be forever free and ordered the army and all parts of the executive branch to treat as free all those enslaved. And whereas news of the end of slavery did not reach the state of Texas and other southwestern states until months after the conclusion of the Civil War. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas and enforced President Lincoln's order, freeing slaves two and a half years after it was first decreed. And whereas enslaved African-Americans celebrated their freedom and June nineteenth became known as Juneteenth, Independence Day, and has served as inspiration and encouragement to future generations, the oldest commemoration of the abolition of history throughout the nation. And whereas forty-six states, the District of Columbia and countries throughout the world have designated Juneteenth, Independence Day, as a special day remembrance, reflection and celebration across the state and the nation, a day to honor the elimination of slavery and to celebrate the proclamation of freedom. And whereas President Joe Biden signed legislation into law, making Juneteenth or June nineteenth the twelfth federal holiday, the latest holiday created since Martin Luther King Junior Day, was created in nineteen eighty-three. And whereas the day honors the sacrifices made to realize freedom and educates others about the roles that African-Americans have played in history and the ongoing fight for equality, now therefore be it resolved that the Kenosha Unified School Board recognizes the importance of Juneteenth, Independence Day and supports the annual celebrations and the lessons they teach regarding the significant role African-Americans have played in the history of the United States. Uh, motion to approve.
Second motion?
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. And brings us to the resolution affirming student belonging. Mr. Bryan?
Thank you. Um, it is my honor to have authored this resolution and, which I believe is the first of its kind. Um, that is the resolution affirming, uh, student belonging and, and inclusion in the month of June. And it's something that I hope becomes an annual tradition for every month of June thereafter. Uh, but the resolution reads as follows. Uh, whereas Pride Month is celebrated each year in the month of June to honor the events at the Stonewall Inn in nineteen sixty-nine, a pivotal moment in the history of LGBTQ plus advocacy in the United States. And whereas Pride Month provides an opportunity to recognize the contributions, resilience and lived experiences of iden-, of individuals who identify as LGBTQ plus. And whereas it is a time to reflect on the importance of treating all people with dignity and respect, regardless of background, identity, expression or beliefs. And whereas despite the progress made, LGBTQ plus individuals, especially youth, continue to face discrimination, bullying and barriers to safety and belonging, making recognition and support from schools and communities critically important. bullying, and barriers to safety and belonging, making recognition and support from schools and communities critically important. And uh, whereas the Kenosha Unified School District is committed to fostering a safe, welcoming, and inclusive environment where all students, staff, and families feel respected and supported. And whereas inclusive practices help create learning environments that promote student well-being, academic success, and a genuine sense of belonging for every learner. And whereas uh, inclusive practices contribute to positive educational outcomes by creating learning environments where every student in the Kenosha Unified School District has the opportunities to succeed and feel a genuine sense of belonging. And uh, and whereas the district values the diversity of its school community that upholds the principle that all students deserve equal access to educational opportunities, free from bullying, discrimination, or harassment. And whereas this commitment reflects KUSD's broader goals of academic excellence, mutual respect, and civic responsibility for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kenosha Unified School Board recognizes June twenty twenty-five as Pride Month in KUSD schools and affirms its ongoing commitment to inclusion and the dignity of all in, dignity of all individuals across the district and community. Uh, make the motion to approve.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second? Second the motion? Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Uh, bringing us to donations to the district, and Mr. Tierney, there were none. Okay, um, now we have the time where each board member can uh, spend a couple of minutes uh, sharing. Uh, starting with Mrs. Stevens. Anything?
Yeah, I'm just getting excited about the end of the school year and all the graduations and all the progress that so many of our students have made and the celebrations that need to continue to support them. Um, it's, it's been a, a busy, busy year, and I'm really proud of the work that I've seen in the schools and how much we have moved forward.
Mrs. Adams?
Yes, uh, yesterday was Memorial Day, so I just wanna uh, take a moment to remember all those who died in active military service to the United States. Um, we thank them and their families, and congratulations to all the soon-to-be graduates.
Mr. Bryan?
Um, I wanna echo Rebecca's sentiments on uh, congratulations to all the students that are graduating uh, at the end of this year. Another uh, school year down for everybody else, thanks to the teachers who made a, a difference in a lot of people's lives. Um, unfortunately, I'm not able to attend any of the graduations this year because I am preparing for residency for my doctoral program um, in Morehead, Minnesota. So I will be unfortunately busy, but I'm looking forward to attending next year. And then lastly, I want to give a shout-out to my mom, Sue Bryan, who put in thirty-five years in the Kenosha Unified School District. That's as long as I've been alive, um, um, teaching special education all across the district and, you know, making a difference for a lot of people. Um, if it wasn't for her, I would not have had the level of interest and passion that I have in education currently. So shout-out to my mom, uh, on this very important evening.
Dr. Price?
Uh, just real quick, um, congratulations to the students that are graduating, and congratulations to all the kids out there that are doing great work and giving their best. And um, I've just met a lot of great teachers this year, and they are doing yeoman's work to help our kids along, so kudos to all of you.
Mrs. Landry?
I also wanna congratulate all of the graduating students this year, and I look forward to going to the graduations. I think it's one of my favorite parts about being a school board member is seeing all those smiling faces at the end of the year.
Mr. Tierney?
What everybody else said, motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, DeMarcus.